Good evening, and I'd like to bring this meeting to order. 431. Roll call.
Mr. Barber. Mr. Blackstock.
President.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Sares.
Here.
Mr. Warren. Dr. Miller.
Here.
And Mr. Davis.
President.
Chairman, if I may, Supervisor Warren emailed me a very brief letter explaining his absence today. He wanted me to just read it into the record. I've sent a copy to Ms. McCluster for the minutes. It says, "Chairman Davis, well, I extend my apologies to you and the entire board of the citizens of Pennsylvania County for my absence at tonight's meeting. I made plans to be out of town 14 months ago prior to my knowledge of the necessity to change the date of my regular meeting. I take my responsibilities as citizens of Pennsylvania County very seriously, not only attending board meetings but other community meetings. Again, I extend my apologies to everyone sincerely here. This is Robert W. Warren."
All right, thank you. We'd like to recognize Mr. Too. Mr. Moore, Mr. Smith, all others that I can't recall your names at the moment. We appreciate you being here tonight, this evening. And so, as we move down to item number four on the agenda, approval of the agenda, excuse me, number three, are there any agendas, I mean, any items to be added to the agenda, please? Staff's not aware of any. Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Is there any discussion from any of the board members? All right.
Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, now we'll now close the vote.
All right, five of five unanimous. For the citizens' convenience, all work session in committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors business meetings. Please remember that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communications, discussion, and work. It's not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outbursts or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by the Board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens section of tonight's business meeting. Moving on to the agenda, item number five, presentations. Health collaborative update. Ms. McCluster.
Yes, Elise Jordan with the Health Collaborative here, and she will be presenting for y'all. Good evening, it's nice to be able to provide a quick update of the work that the Health Collaborative has had going on in Pennsylvania County and the wide Dan River region for you guys. As a quick introduction, my name is Elise and the project manager. And the Health Collaborative is a cross-sector coalition of organizations, community groups, local governments, departments, and agencies, nonprofits, and citizens that are all working together to improve health outcomes in Pennsylvania County, Danville, and Caddo County in North Carolina. Currently, we have 223 members who represent 150 different organizations and neighborhoods and communities throughout the Dan River region. And how we accomplish our work is by supplementing the resources, leveraging the resources of our partners, as well as infusing their programming with policy systems and environment change that allows for long-term, sustainable health improvement efforts to occur. But we are centered around five main goal areas.
Just like to keep you on your toes.
Yeah, well, it's Tuesday. The first is active living, so creating equitable access to opportunities to be physically active. Healthy eating, which is providing equitable access to local, fresh, and healthy food. Access to health care, which is increasing health care resources, education specifically for low-income minorities and other underserved populations. Creating healthy spaces, so it's working with local institutions, community organizations and neighborhoods to encourage healthy living and encourage quality programs and environments that support health. We're making healthy choice the easy choice in places where we spend time, so worksites, schools, out-of-school programming, and in our faith-based communities. And there's leadership in faculty building, which is building and maintaining a strong and active collaborative structure with broad ownership and leadership opportunities that represents the diversity of the Dan River region. So specifically, in Pennsylvania County, we have a couple initiatives that are currently active. The first is the Local Food Systems Steering Committee. This is a regional cross-sector group that is actively working to foster relationships among local food system participants. They're advocating for policy change and infrastructure development in order to create a fair and economically robust food system. So what that means is promoting a food system that supports vibrant farms, healthy people, strong communities, and a thriving local economy. We also have the Thrive Initiative, which is through the Healthy Spaces Action Team, and taking healthy living strategies, so physical activity, healthy eating, and other well-being initiatives into worksites, schools, out-of-school programming, and our faith-based communities. They provide technical assistance in setting up health policies, increasing access to health programming, as well as also providing support in those environment improvements that can increase overall well-being. Attached to that is the Thrival War, that run in conjunction with Health Summit, and it allows us to highlight initiatives in the community that are community-run, that are supporting health access in low-people. I've passed one that has included Pennsylvania County Parks and Recreation for the Middle School Park Project, as well as Chatham Park for the competition alley farmer's market. In the summer of last year, we also entered into partnership with Pennsylvania County Schools and PAST to explore school-based health centers. And what we're doing is we're going through a planning and feasibility process. Right now, so we're testing feasibility, we're identifying service needs, so doing a health needs assessment to the school. And we're also completing a planning process with 330 Partners, our consulting group, that's looking at history of sustainability. So how can we increase access to health care for students and staff in the schools, so taking what can be done by a school nurse and expanding those services to bring in service clients such as behavioral health, primary care, vision and dental, and doing that in a way that's sustainable without further restraining or causing constraint with the resources that the school system has. And then lastly, we have the Community Health Worker Initiative. So we have 10 community health workers and one care coordinator. They act as the link between healthcare, human resource service organizations, and community members. They're really there to help residents better manage their chronic illnesses. So they're there to help increase health equity. They act as that link, they provide training, they can ask questions, they can provide transportation to the doctor. They can also provide other services, so they can provide resources and referral to food, housing, workforce development, and job resources. In addition to working on an individual level, they also help the community. They do outreach, community education, social support, and advocacy. So they work with individuals and families on managing their chronic illnesses. And they also work with the Health Collaborative at large, developing barriers such as transportation or food insecurity, to be able to obtain better health. Let's just kind of update on some current initiatives that we have going on right now that impact Pennsylvania County. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have, if there's anything you guys do want to know or something that we just briefly get on.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any questions from the board members? I hope you feel better, girl. I was going to get you something to drink.
Yeah, it's kind of ironic that the Health Collaborative...
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. You're off well, girl.
Thank you.
I know how you feel, I guarantee you that. Moving on to item D, AEP Power Line Presentation Regarding Potential Revisions of Pennsylvania County Code Systems, 35 to 50. Mr. Sides?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll get things started. We've got a couple of much more knowledgeable parties involved, both American Litton Power and Matt Rowe, our Director of Etime, the Governor will comment. But just generally speaking, we had a meeting a few weeks back, or a couple of months back maybe, where the city, I mean, the county staff met with AEP to talk about the process of running the transmission line to serve the Berry Hill mega-site. And part of the discussion was, under our current ordinance, it will require a special use permit for each parcel that this power line would cross. And there's approximately 24 parks or something like that. So we wanted to talk about other options and we thought a little bit about what other localities have done. So what we got in your package tonight is a suggestive solution, is there is a current section in the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, 35-50, that's labeled exemptions. And it lists several uses that are exempt from going through the zoning process. And what we're proposing, you'll hear a little bit more about, is to add an exemption that says electrical transmission lines of 138 KD or less that are constructed to serve a properly-zoned industrial park. So it's a pretty limited definition, if you gather. It's only industrial, and it's only above a certain size or within a certain size category. So we don't think it's something that will crop up as a problem in other projects. So, Mr. Rowe, if he doesn't matter, I think, to tell you a little bit about how this fits into the big picture for the Southern Virginia mega-site and where we are in developing that project.
Sure, thank you, Greg. Board members always good to be with you, in front of you. And this body, of course, knows as far as the excitement occurring as far as with the Southern Virginia mega-site at Berry Hill. And it's oftentimes, as far as we're in this world, and it's just due to the size and quality of the clients that we're dealing with, oftentimes paid companies, so on and so forth, where we're just not able to share so much with the public. And it's not our doing, it's frankly, the request and the requirement of companies. And so with that being the case, I do think as far as it's fair to say that we kind of feel back for there a little bit, and give as far as some of the project sizes, as far as averages that are looking at the park, and just give the scope of what the mega-site has enabled us to be in the game for. We keep numbers and tracks of this all the time, and it's very important for us to do so as we look at as far as return on investment for the public tax dollars. The average investment for a project that is currently looking at the mega-site is a little over $1.6 billion of direct investment, that's in machinery and tools and in real property. Those projects result in an average workforce as far as new jobs over a five-year period of between 1,800 to 1,900 jobs, and the average wage of those jobs are in excess of $50,000. And so I think that's really what the purpose of this body was, as far as Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville are working together jointly to create such an asset to allow us to be in the discussion for those types of projects. We've come a long ways, gentlemen, and you know that based upon as far as your involvement, your leadership, and the fact of we would get requests every once in a while, the state would believe that, you know, well, you know, maybe this site is, you know, can win certain projects here or there, but I don't think it was really as far as a key priority. It was a priority for us, but it wasn't a priority maybe for the larger state as a whole. And I can tell you, as far as that completely changed when we got in the game for the Toyota Mazda plant, or the finals for that plant. And we've learned a lot since then. And we've learned as far as how to better market the site, we've learned as far as what our strengths are, obviously workforce, labor force of, you know, 1,273 within a 45-mile radius of students that are actively in automated programs that are geared towards the types of automotive, aerospace, advanced manufacturing, precision machining, and advanced composite material companies that we're going after. And we've learned as far as what our weaknesses are. And what we learned through that process and through two subsequent processes with very good branding companies, is that in order for us to win, we need to get as far as that site within a 16- to 18-month development timeframe. This last, you know, visit and company information really helped as far as drive that point home. And now, this is without a doubt, based upon the actions being taken across the Commonwealth, one of Virginia, not the state's premier mega-site, and the state's best chance as far as getting that elusive, large, transformative project. And so one of the things, of course, that we're looking at doing to try to reduce that timeframe, is trying to number one, as far as acquire right-of-way for bringing in the power. The average power user that's looking at the site is in excess of 30 megawatts, and currently the existing setup and arrangement out there can serve up to 20. And so that really brings as far as and necessitates the need for this power line and this service in the park. And then also, as far as the timeline of trying to create as far as a public-private partnership to work with great partners like AEP, so that we're not as far as putting taxpayers at risk. And so, of course, we've been really working with the back commission up to this point, moving the project forward. And so, you know, it is what it is as far as public knowledge, in fact, that HB 1840, the very own delegate Danny Marshall sponsored, has passed the General Assembly and is going on to the Governor's desk. And that's a game changer as far as allowing these types of projects to go into parks like this, and allows finally be on the level playing field with much of the southeast, where they're able to put infrastructure in place prior to having the company come there. And that allows us also to greatly reduce that timeframe into that 16- to 18-month window. And so I hope that that gives you a sense of what we're looking at, and it hopefully drives home as far as the importance of what's before you in trying to find a way to streamline this process, while at the same time being reasonable to concerns of citizens, and also following as far as precedent set by other communities and precedent set by state law, which I know that our very capable attorney has looked at and drafted this. So if there's any additional questions, I'll certainly answer them. And Mr. Sides, if you have anything else you'd like for me to hit on, I'll certainly do my best.
Well, I think that covered it very well, Matt. Covered the reason why we're trying to streamline this process. And we're fortunate enough to have representatives from AEP with us tonight, and I think they can talk a little bit about generally the process and what they've done in some other localities. And David Swisher, I believe we do represent the group.
Yep. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. George will pass out a little summary sheet of the project and where we're at and what we're doing now. Just to give you a little history, we are currently entered into an agreement with RIFA to provide preliminary engineering, preliminary siting, and the right-of-way, all the way through purchasing, right-of-way, to build this 138-kb transmission line for the park. Under that, RIFA is paying us for all expenses involved in doing that. So they pay us, we go out and get right-of-way, they're paying us the money to go meet the right-of-way from the customer. They pay us for all of the engineering fees and all of that stuff. So in that process, right now, we've held an open house out in Rossburg, where the public was invited in, that we had several line routes that we were looking at doing, and we're taking the information we've gotten from that open house and went back, and we're in the process of trying to come up with a final line route that will limit that down. We hope to have that out later this spring. We do not have that at this time. Then our process is, you have to get one or two types of approval. You can either go straight to the commission and get commission approval, Virginia State Corporation Commission, or by law, you're allowed to get local approval with the county through the Board of Supervisors. Commission approval is six to 12 months. It slows the process down and it drives the cost off of the process. But Appalachian worked years ago, probably five or six years ago, I was part of that, where we worked with the commission to allow for the local approval, since for the most part, this line and under the law, the lines are built strictly for industrial parks. You generally have local board approval for such economic development activities and lines. They allow us to get the local approval from a board supervisor. And that's the route we've elected to go, because we feel like that would be a much less expensive and a much quicker timeframe trying to meet Matt's timeline. The agreement that we have in place is trying to get the line built by November of 2020. That's what we're trying to actually do. And the new law that Matt mentioned, if that passes, will certainly aid in doing that. So when we were going through the local approval process, we noticed in your zoning ordinance that you require special use permit. We met with the county to see if there are any way, if you guys are willing, you can have an exemption to that. Certainly, if you don't, we certainly won't go through the permit. It's not a problem with us to do it either way. If we do this exemption, it does not affect the individual landowner. We still have to go to that landowner. We still have to ask for permission. We still have to pay for the right-of-way. It doesn't change anything in the way we deal with the individual landowner. This process, basically, if you elect to do an exemption, would basically speed the process up and save RIFA money as far as the time that we're going to have to spend going through this. So basically, we're kind of right now at three options. We can either go back to the SEC, and we're fine with doing that and go through that process. We can stick the route which we're going and continue to do the special use permit, or if you guys elect to do an exemption, we can follow that process and go through. The language is written to where it is strictly to specify just for industrial parks, where a utility couldn't come in and say, "We want to build a power line from point A to point B for their use," that would not fall under this exemption whatsoever. It's just for industrial parks. You guys have any other questions or anything for me?
Mr. Blackstock, I was hoping you would come in there. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So if you take the option of going through the local bodies' ordinances and process, the only thing that you're asking us tonight is basically to waive the special use permit process and give you a complete exemption. Is that right?
You, I think you have to take it to your planning commission, and then your planning commission would come back to the board and say, "We would approve the exemption." Then we still have to formally come back and ask you for the official permission to approve the line.
That couldn't take but, what would that take, Matt? 60 days? You go through the planning commission, and then you go, then you go to the BZA for the special use permit?
So I think as far as the timeline, this is based upon having to deal with, because the way the current language, I'll have to refer to our zoning administrator, Mr. Sides, but I think the issue from my understanding is that he would have to deal with every single individual property owner, and then finding the, you know, next of kin, power of attorney, everybody signing off on that permit process. Is that correct, Mr. Sides?
It is. We typically do a special use permit, it's something that's on your property. This is about 24 properties. And they are not at the point yet that they've absolutely finalized the route, so we'd have to wait some time before they can define what those 24 properties are, and then it essentially would be 24 different cases. So it's not impossible, it's just the magic word you've heard today is kind of be a little bit more streamlined and efficient. And if this exemption passed, instead of going through the special use process, they would just come to the Board of Supervisors and say, "We'd like your support to serve, to put in this transmission line to serve an industrial park." So the board would still have a voice.
So you, what you're saying is you'd have to have how many of the parcels of land that they cross? You would have to have that many hearings before the BZA, for each parcel?
That's correct. Because each property, each crossing would be an individual case.
I just, the reason I ask these questions is because when we waive that, when the board waives it, citizens, would we be required, they, to have a public hearing before we actually approve that? I want to make sure the citizens have a point at where they could have a voice.
Yes, sir. This is actually on your agenda tonight for matters from Legislative Committee, and all it's asking or seeking tonight is for you to authorize this to go to the planning commission for a public hearing and a recommendation, and then it ultimately bubbles back up to the board for a public hearing, for you to act to make this zoning text amendment.
Yeah, but my question is, if we do this, we take this action, we approve it, at some point, does it public, do we have a public hearing to, before this board actually votes for this project?
Um, I'll have to check. I'm not sure there's a legal requirement, but you certainly can have public hearings whenever you want to seek public input, and I would recommend that, just to, so you know what the citizens take on this situation.
Because we put something in this document that says before final approval that we would have a public hearing?
Well, for the ordinance change, there would be the two public hearings, for the ordinance change itself. And that's a set, that's a given by law. If we go through that process and this becomes an exemption, then it's out of the zoning ordinance. AEP comes to the board and says, "We want to run this line, instead of going through the state, we'd like to have your support." Then the board could choose to have a public hearing, but it would, it would be not something that we would add to the zoning ordinance, because then you're outside the zoning ordinance. So it could just be forward policy.
What I'm saying for the other board members is, if we change this, the public, these people that own these 24 parcels, it's no point, because I understand that would have any voice in bringing their concerns to the board. Is, I'm asking staff, and Mr. Hunt, can we put something somewhere along this process to require a public hearing before this board actually votes on this specific part?
Sure, you can always add that contingency into your motion at this particular time to require staff to do it.
And these 24 parcels, and AEP, correct me if I'm correct, they will have say in, you have to negotiate an easement with them and pay them for the taking of their portion of the land.
Yes.
And for some reason, they do not, you can't negotiate that, ultimately, you have condemnation power.
You certainly don't want to go there.
And you don't want to go that route.
You don't want to go there, you're going to try to do everything you can to avoid that, but if you had a customer, you know, Matt has a 30-megawatt customer that wants to locate in that park, and the only way you can do it is build a line to it, that would be the end result, you'd have to. But you certainly, you have a group of landowners there that you can maneuver around and try to, you know, work your line around where you can get it the best place you can.
I certainly think it would make sense. I mean, I actually, I'll serve all the local boards, and obviously, we know the importance of getting things done. And the bureaucracy of all the steps of locating an industry into, especially industrial parks, I just want to make sure that we include at some point during the process that the public has a right to speak and voice their concerns to this board. I'm not opposed to this, in fact, I like it, but I want to make sure before we move forward with this, that we have something that guarantees the public the right to come before this board in the public hearing process, and state their support or concerns or whatever. That's how democracy works.
Right, sure. And just to be clear, it's great to reiterate, there'll be a public hearing for the zoning text amendment at the planning commission, where people could stand and speak, there'll be a public hearing at the board level to do the zoning text amendment. And if you want a third public hearing, you could direct staff to notice at the appropriate time when they come to seek their exemption, we could have a public hearing that night too. It's just what the board wants to do, we can work with you to phrase that in a motion that we're bound by, and we will get it done if that's the blessing of the board.
That would definitely, that would make me feel better.
Okay.
And right now, we are...
And right now, we are anticipating approximately 24 landowners. As we try to get this final land route, line route formalized, we'll know more as we, as we go through that process. But we're trying to avoid those things that you have to avoid when you're constructing a line. You're looking at terrain, you're trying to make it, you're going to try to build it the least expensive way you can, the straightest way you can. So we're still all in that process. And in the past, like I said, we've done this for Henry County with Commonwealth Crossing. Basically, we got a line, we told them where it was going, we went to the board supervisors, they approved it and stuff like that. And that's kind of how it's worked. Four lines going to industrial parks for economic development purposes.
I've all, all four cut through red tape and.
Yeah, that's all we're trying to.
But we want to make sure we put, we don't, we want to get it public.
Right. Any other questions?
Does that approval ultimately come back in form of a resolution or something?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mr. Skiers?
Say one, Doug. Do you know when you'll finalize the route? Do you have any idea what kind of timeline for when you're making official in that?
Yes, you do have a timeline. It's going to be later this spring, maybe into the early summer, but we're working on it now. Any other questions for the board? Yes, sir, Mr. Rowe.
Just, I want to make sure that clarification's before the public. But Greg, regarding the ordinance, is this being paid for all by tobacco commission funds as far as right of way acquisition?
There is funding available from a repurposed tobacco commission grant towards right of way. We don't know what the ultimate cost will be, but there is money for that purpose.
I think this is really important, you know, when we're saying riffa, 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 it's coming from an existing tobacco commission grant.
One other thing, as far as state law, you don't have to have a resolution. You can do it any way you want to. It's just, you have to approve the power company to build the line to the industrial park. You can accomplish that any way you want to. But we can't build it unless we either get approval from the board supervisor or from the state corporation commission. And again, we can go either, any way you want to. It's up to you guys how you want to proceed. We're just giving you the options kind of where we're at right now.
Okay. Mr. Swisher? I, I, I have to go, I go along with Mr. Blackstock. And what he's saying is, in the political spectrum of this particular job, when we're, we, we want efficiency and as quick as we can get there, Mr. Rowe, as well, good job. But the problem is, if we're not very, very careful, and I'm glad he brought that out, is that if we go in there and we, we look like the, the, the local government is just taking people's properties, we have a very, very fine line to walk to make sure everybody's on the same page and everybody's getting representation. And so, and I, I have to, I agree with him on that, and because we have to be careful of our power, so-called sphere of power. So I do want to thank you. I want to thank Mr. Sides, Mr. Rowe, and I think that's everybody that's included. And Mr. Swisher for a very good job. Thank you so kindly.
Mr. Chairman, I just commented, and I don't think adding that public hearing hinders our mission of streamlining the process at all, because still with, with a special use project, a special use permit, you're going through public hearings with the planning commission, and you're going through public hearings with board zoners deals. If we put language in here that is exempt from the zoning ordinance but subject to a public hearing through the board supervisors, that's the only way you guys would hear about the case. If it went through the regular special use, you would have no voice. So this process, it would still be pretty streamlined for the company that they could come in and at one meeting, they could present that case to the board supervisors and get public input that way. So we feel like that meets the mission.
Okay. Do we need anything moved with it?
It's on the agenda tonight, Greg. We don't need to edit anything.
I don't think so.
Do we need to edit the motion to include a public hearing in the motion?
Well, if, if, if that's going to make you comfortable, we'll get with Cameron and we'll tweak that and have her hand out for us tonight.
Okay. Do we have consensus on the board? On that, okay. Well, you have consensus over.
That'll be good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swisher. Item six, A, Wayside Park Project Update. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, board members. Last June, I came, time flies, last June, I came to you with a Wayside Park presentation, discussion on opportunities there to really rehabilitate, revitalize that, that park in Hurt in northern part of the county. At that point, the project was around a $300,000 project. There have been some changes, some good changes to the project, including financially, and I wanted to update you on that as well. I did want to introduce an Eagle Scout or a prospective Eagle Scout that's going to be doing a project in the park. He's going to be working on steps from the hanging bridge up to the pavilion. Met with him and his dad, his mother, Faith, is here with him. It's Faith and Bryce Atkins, and he'll be starting in on that project here at the end of the month. His father's John Atkins, and he is a scout master. Bryce goes to faith Christian, then he's coming up to Towne-Hurt. So he's right up there next door to the, to that park. So we're excited to have him and his mother here, and his father's been heavily involved in that project. So according to John, there are four or five other Eagle Scouts waiting in the wings that need projects, and we have told him that we more than, can more than fill his need for Eagle Scout projects in Wayside. So glad to have him and his mother here today. So the project was initially $300,000 or so. Counties, over the, over the next two years, appropriated $75,000 towards this project for an investment of $150,000. Last fall, I attended a workshop in, at the Benton Library in Roona County on a prospective grant from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. They had been given funding from Mountain Valley Pipeline for forest mitigation to offset the deforestation of property in the counties affected by the pipeline. The grant was available to anyone in those counties or in those localities that were affected. Obviously, the pipeline in the county is approximately 15 miles from Wayside Park, so we were, we were more than anxious to put together a, a grant packet for that project and get some funding through the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. So that project moved pretty, that grant project moved pretty quickly. It was awarded, we were awarded one of seven grants in state from that project, $106,460. And so with that grant and that influx of money that we didn't initially count on, we real, we took a half step back and said, how can we make this project bigger and better? And we had some discussions with some local grant funders about increasing the scope of the project and, and their interest in the project. They were more than interested in the project, and we have three outstanding grant applications in right now with those, and we should know the, the, the final kind of tally on those by the end of June. We're very optimistic. But this project has gone from a $300,000 project to a $713,000 project. And so what that means for Pennsylvania County is, with their investment of $150,000, that's a nearly 500% return on your investment. So, and to give you some perspective on another project that, that has been mentioned here earlier, the middle school park project, that was a $650,000 project, and that was a, a funding commitment from the county of $150,000. So April 1st will be my eight-year anniversary here, and we've had two significant projects where we brought in more than half a million dollars in grant funding for those projects. So we're excited about that project. You have in your packet some close-ups of the project and of some of the things that we're looking to do. So to, to get back to, into the schedule of it. So we, we had an opportunity for increased funding to the project. We were able to secure, that you saw in your board packet last month, a $15,000 planning grant from the Danville Regional Foundation. That allowed us to go out and really master plan Wayside Park, and we used a company out of Beach Grove Designs, Trinda Levitt out of Bedford. She came in, worked with me and staff, and really master planned that, that project. Gave us pretty pictures, so to speak, that you have in your packet, and you also have an overhead up front here as well. So the $713,000 meant nearly two miles of trails. It meant a larger playground. It meant a, a smaller amphitheater on the parking lot side, additional restroom facilities, additional shelters, improvements to the camping sites there, improvements to the, the hanging bridge there. We also worked into, as the trail system runs close to the property line with the multimodal park, we did a spur off of that to tie in the dead ends on the property line between us and the multimodal park, so that there are opportunities for industry to tie into that trail system as they, you know, as Matt markets that, that property. So opportunities to tie into the, to the trail system there. So those are some of the things that we, we added. There are a number of different types of trails, paved trails, natural trails through the woods, crushed stone trails, similar to what we have at the Ringo Trail. So we have, we've really built out the park. We've added in outdoor pickleball courts, something, something a little bit different that no other park in that area has. So the, the pull-off area that you see from 29 Business, that's just as you cross over the bridge of, over Sycamore Creek, the pull-off area will become more of a trailhead, and you will access the trail system through that. There'll be additional signage there. We'll add signage to the, to the first entrance that takes you back into really the, the belly of the park. We'll improve that entrance. A lot of the structures, whether it's the, the chimney grills that are throughout the park or the Wayside, the, the hanging bridge abutments, they have that stacked stone design. And so that's something, a design element that will be used throughout. There are a significant number of, along Sycamore Creek are a significant number of sycamore trees. That amphitheater will be called the Sycamore Creek Amphitheater. Some of the shade structures that we have around there, and also we'll add sycamore trees in that area for, for shade. So we've really built out the park. The county's commitment's $150,000. The park project itself is $713,000. We'll have an opportunity to, to finalize all that grant funding here in the coming months. But that is, that's an update on Wayside Park in, in Hurt. Big thank you to Elton Blackstock. He's been a big supporter of this project and helped to secure funding for it, so much appreciation to him. Whether it's in Hurt or in the south side, wherever it's recreation, I'm always there and willing and able to look at how we can improve recreational facilities, not just for structured recreation, but also this park provides a ton of unstructured recreation and something that's needed significantly in the northern part of the county. That's the update from last June on Wayside Park.
Any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt, I really appreciate all the parties that have been involved in making this dream a reality. And I want to say a special thank you to the scouts. We already have a trail down there, one of the Eagle Scouts helped oversee the, making that trail several years ago. And I've walked that trail several times. And Wayside Park is a historical park that holds a special place in the hearts of the people of that area, region. In years past, a lot of baptismal services were held there by churches of all backgrounds and denominations. And this is just an exciting thing for our region to make this, to bring this park that's been around for a long time to kind of get thrown by the wayside, brought back to life. And if you ever visit the park, it's a very beautiful piece of real estate. Also, it comes into play with backing up to the new industrial park and the rifa that we just formed. And it's an exciting time in that area with a new bridge, long bridge coming across from Alta Vista, which will be as much needed, much needed and an eyesore currently. And the new bridge will be kind of the gateway over to Pennsylvania County. So with this and the, hopefully, what we'll bring into the industrial park and Wayside Park, you know, I see good things coming from, from the board in the end, and I appreciate the board's support, your support, Mr. Moore, and the, I don't want to name the grantees yet, but to award the grants, but we certainly want to make sure that we recognize those folks when the appropriate time comes. I'm excited. This is a, kind of been a dream of mine for a long time, and one of the reasons I chose to serve in this board.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore, thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Moore, you guys have come a long way in a short amount of time, and it's tremendous work for you. Do you have any timeline of when we may see some movement over there, getting the project started?
So we should know where we stand financially by the end of June. So later in the summer, in the fall, we'll start seeing a move. Actually, you know, within, with Bryce doing the steps, there'll be things starting there here in the next couple of weeks. They'll start to work on the steps going up the hill there and what is, what is true. So, you know, it's an 18-month, 18 to 20-month project, to start things, seeing, seeing action by the end of, end of the summer with the ladies.
Any other questions?
I would like to add, thank you, Mr. Moore, for a good job, always, well done. If anybody can make a way out of nowhere, Mr. Moore does it, and I appreciate it. He's, he's got all, he's got, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's his wife or it's that nice head he's got, but he has a way.
How's it going?
It's the war, winning, Mark Moore. Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. But anyway, you always, well job, well done. I appreciate the collaborative movement with legs. I mean, Mr. Rowe over there, and then Mr. Catalyst. I didn't know Mr. Blackstock is putting a, putting a little charge up with me because he's, he's kind of energizing me. I want Ringo going all the way to Richmond. I want the whole thing linked up.
Sounds sensible.
That's my goal. That's my objective. And I'm not going to say I'm more walking, because I'll probably be too old by the time it gets, but I, we thank you for a job well done. I appreciate it. Thank you so kindly. And by the way, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to see Ms. Faith and Bryce would stand. I could give you guys a clap. And by the way, the county administrator, he's an Eagle Scout, so look at where you can go. That's the jumble right here. If I'm not mistaken, we have, I think we have full presidents of the United States that were Eagle Scouts. So we need all the help we can get in Washington, DC. So I hope your momma trained you real good and helped us out. All right, moving along. Item B, Fire DMS Improvement Update. Mr. Christopher Slim.
Everybody is ready. I'll stand over here. Where is it? I'm here. I'm going to get something like this fancy in my office. So I have an hour, right?
Oh, you got 50. A little less than that if you don't mind.
I appreciate y'all having me in this afternoon. Mr. Slim had asked me if I'd give an update, maybe just a little bit about Fire DMS, but I thought I'd go about a public thank you overall real quick, because there's a couple things I want to, I want to get on there. I look at, it's all one puzzle and all those pieces have to come together for things to really work it through at the end of the day. And it's a big puzzle with a lot of moving, moving parts. So just, we've created this year, created a mission statement, kind of along with our budget, how we set some budget goals, but we created a mission statement. And one of the things I just want to hit on there is, we do want that mission to be delivered by a professional, in a professional manner, by well-trained, highly dedicated volunteers and professionals. And we have some very dedicated volunteers in this county and those that, you know, constantly want to take classes, and we're very lucky in that aspect. Animal control isn't, it comes under me, just a little bit about the, last year, they answered 2,600 calls, and, and we're getting ready to move them down to Petson. We've got some office space down there. I think it's going to create a good relationship with Petson. We already have a relationship. We want to make that and improve that. We want to make that and improve that and make it better. It also gives a little visibility to our animal patrol officers when people come in and they have questions and stuff. We have three animal patrol officers and they, they very, very hard workers and do a great job for us. I never, some have a complaint about animal control. I tell you when I could just jump somewhere else, my phone rang off the hook for animal control. And so I'm lucky, lucky to do it. Our 911 center, this is what comes under me. We answered almost 30,000 911 calls last year. I think half those came during Hurricane Michael in one afternoon. But we also have the administration lines down there. We're answering over 80,000 calls a year in our administration line. One of the things we just recently did was realign some of our shifts. We're looking to make all our shifts consistent. And what we want out of this dispatcher, we want out of this dispatcher and out of this dispatcher. So you always are getting consistent information. We've actually started scripting how we give out some calls so we're getting the right information out immediately, especially on the Fire EMS. One of the things we're going to really push over this year and probably next year is training as far as managerial leadership training for our shift supervisors. They've never really had some of that. We're really focusing on that this year. And we're also going to work to bring back our quality assurance program. We've done it years ago and it's not, we're working to bring that back. Just the one thing about 911, I can't stress this enough. Everything happens out here as far as public safety starts there. And when it doesn't work right there, that means on down the line, the domino effect is, can be catastrophic. So we have to work with a high degree of excellency, 20%. And that is one of the things we're stressing on our folks is how important we're positioning it. Emergency management, you know, last year we were slammed with disasters from tornadoes to hurricanes, declared events. We were on a conference call for one of the storms and I told them how much training they were going to get. It was like, they were predicting at that time three or four inches. And I was with Chief Eagle, he and I were together with Steve. Chief Eagle told the others, so it was three or four inches, rain, that's all you got? After everything you've been done at us due to some of the disasters we've had. You know, we're currently working with FEMA on the recovery of that. And we met with FEMA about public assistance and getting some of those loans back. I hope that we'll get the money back to, we'll be able to get to Ringo Trail back and save it was in. And a couple of other things we're working there too and trying to get some of our own time back as well. Good news is every time you have a declared disaster, which we've had two in the fall, a portion of money from that disaster has to go in mitigation grants, a certain percent, about 15%. So there is going to be a lot of money in two grants for mitigation purposes. And another positive thing is we belong to the regional planning commission. We already have a mitigation plan and that bumps us up on the list. So one of the things we're going to look at, not too long ago, we had generators for several fire rescue stations. We're going to try to get several more with generators. And hopefully we'll get everybody on, in our, our fire rescue stations on generator power, which is great. Especially you're such a big county. So, you know, you're Reno as an example, if I can get 10 little generator out there, if we have a disaster that affects that area and I need the short-term shelter people, we can work with fire stations to do that. So there's a lot of pluses to doing that. Next thing is too, you'll be seeing it within the next month or two. We've got an update, our emergency operations plan, we're in the final stages of that. I had an in-fair helping with that. And we're about to last 10% by the end of the day, so I need it all y'all to get it qualified. Fire rescue. Last year we ran approximately 8,000 EMS responses. You know, we did have an unexpected cost when we had to bring DRT in. But one positive thing about that, that we looked at how we were using our backup service. And one, spread them out a little bit more than what they had been in the past. And number two, we dispatched them a little differently now. And we use them more efficiently and more effectively and it's having a positive impact on patient outcomes, which is the number one thing we wanted to do. In the near future, we're going to sit down with the transport agencies in the county. We're going to see how we can improve our response times even more. We're really working to hammer that out and start reducing those and we're going to tax that next. Recently opened, we started opening some communication for granted ER. And that's been really positive. And we're going to start a pre-hospital meeting there similar to what we do there in the data view. But we've never really, we've started some communication with them. We take a lot of patients there, a whole lot of patients. So they've been very, very positive with us and we might not sit down and talk to them then. We started looking at monthly data and monthly mapping calls. An example of that is this is what we did in February EMS calls. What we're doing before we're doing this is we're looking to see if we're positioned right. We're running another one of these with our backup trucks to see if we've got them positioned right and seeing where they're going on calls and so forth. So trying to pull as much data as we can out of our cad, our dispatch server. Sometimes that's difficult and we're working with the vendors to fix that. Fire, we recently, one of the big things we recently did, we got a grant for a fit testing machine. We've never fit tested in the county and that's an NFPA standard. It's a health standard too. And that is when you put your backpack on, you have, you're with your mask, the fit testing machine will tell us if you've had the right mask. Right now, our departments don't have individual masks. We have some money set aside to fix that once we get fit testing. So each firefighter will have their own mask. That's one of the things we've got to do. That's true NFPA issue, it's true health and safety issue. So it's top of all this and Mike is starting that, he and Terry are working on that now. We've sat down with the, we've started doing it once while we do some quarterly meetings with the volunteers. And one of the things with leadership is we've been able to hammer out what we think are basic standards, just the very basic standards for apparatus. And the next thing I think we're going to do is take that and try and build our own fire truck specs. And so we can standardize across the board. We've had really positive conversations with the volunteers on that. They want to do that, so we're going to start taking that steps. With the, we're looking at improving our fire response and what apparatus we're sending to the fire. We've got that on the near future too. Are we sending the right apparatus right out to get that to a fire? You know, we're sending enough stations to certain things. We started, we sat down last week with Dan Keen and talking with him about how we respond to incidents at Dan Keen. And Mike is setting up some drills there, so we're going to test that a little bit. We're working the next two, and this was a big thing out of the study, is fire ground accountability and identification. When you come on the fire ground, we don't have a standard identification. You don't know maybe who can enter a fire, who's certified, who's, who isn't. Sometimes who's the chief officer? I've worked in, working in county for, if you're on a fire ground, you have a armed hazard, you're pumping it. Then you're not allowed to go into the fire, you're not certified yet to do things outside of that. So we're looking at ways to do, how we can do that and have accountability. So as an example, you know, I had, I had another boy that worked for me, another jurisdiction. He was killed a couple of weeks ago, he was found through a phone. And having that, if we had that situation, do we know who's in that building to have accountability? So Mike is working on that to do that. So, you know, it is dangerous business. It's a very dangerous business. So we need to make sure we're taking all the measures to protect our public safety in the county. Increasing apparatus money has been helping us to buy better apparatus. And we hope to be able to continue that in the future. We'll continue to look at local call volumes here and mapping the calls. This is our fire calls for February. And not all of those are actually structural fires, they were alarms, some vehicle accidents, brush fires, just like the vehicle fires. So, but we are looking at that. When we, we looked at last year's, I was over there looking the whole year and I was surprised when I saw Grant has, has ordered them out of structure fires, which is some of the areas in the county. So it was kind of interesting to look at that and, you know, seeing where our call volume is at. The special operations team, we used them more in the fall than I think they've ever been using before. We've activated the same people in the same house as twice, you know, some of the small. Those guys were put through tests and they really responded. We actually had a situation this year on there where we had boats flipped over and, you know, had some guys fall out. Luckily they were able to be rescued and otherwise that would have been, not a very good idea. Those guys were really putting forth a lot of effort. We've assigned a fire marshal to work with him and that's been a really positive thing. And we're looking at how to equip the rescue one and some of the other things to be better. The departments are calling for the team more and more. And we were at a structure fire, is it C-SEAM? I think it was. Down, down east of here, you know, the commanders, the way they take us, I call them special ops teams. We just get manpower because we want to smash the manpower. So I think it's a great idea. So we've been, we've been doing some stuff like that. But they are proving themselves more and more every day. We're sitting, we've emphasized a lot of training toward that. We need to just continue to fund that truck and that team. Overall, one of the big things we're going to see soon, we're getting some billboards up for recruitment and retention. We're really putting some emphasis on that like we did saying Dr. Miller not too long ago. Mike's going to work on getting some posters out just in some restaurants and places like that. We really want to put some emphasis on that. We've got to continue to put some emphasis on that and marketing ourselves. And I mean, there is some cost to that. It's not super expensive, but it's, it's really worth it. We've got the agencies in, in the habit now of looking for contract prices when they purchase things. That was one of the things we talked about in the, in the study. And we go to some vendors now and I talk to vendors like, hey, you have a contract that these guys can buy off of, buy direct. And most of the vendors want a contract price of what Price Reenan gets, Nigel Toll gets, Blair. So we've been working, working that out. We're going to be sitting down with the city real soon with the handle Fire Pop Data. They actually asked us, we would sit out there and talk about things we can do to want to be gathered and purchased together and maybe do some stuff like that. Continuing to emphasize training, I can't say that enough. That's the backbone of everything we do. We've got to continue that. We're going to be putting a lot of effort next year into leadership and management type classes. One of the things that is an issue still sometimes is getting instructors. And we're really working hard to get around that and trying to get some instructors to be in here to teach. But we're going to work really hard. We just did a joint venture with the Daniel firefighter unit. And it was a leadership management type weekend. And I think we put about 20 people in that weekend. It's played the constant, they came to us asking if we were doing it. And we, we're starting to have, again, work sessions with the volunteer leadership. Every once in a while we'll get on Saturday, we'll have lunch and you come to one and thank Mr. Slim for you. And it's pretty good to talk about a lot of issues in there, things we're open to tack and fix. And, you know, things we do now versus things that are 10 years down the road. It's been pretty popular. Just real quick about just the monitoring studies, some things. Number one thing in the study was back then, it was lack of coordination. I think we're working to fix that and become a one system type of style of management. We get the ordinance in, that's going to clarify the structure, I hope. The next step, we really need a strategic plan for public safety. I kind of fell off on that, see what, what we're going to do with the commission and so forth. But we really do need to have a strategic plan and that really is the guide in our next five to seven years. We're working on accountability, so we'll meet the NFPA 1500 standard. We want to also improve the communication between us and the volunteers. I think we're doing that, Mike's upping the deck. And I'm going to look at ways how we can do that because that was and does need to improve. And I think, I think we're making it there. Again, we want to discuss our, getting the coordinator training better. We really need to convince her to have a full-time training coordinator. That was recommended in the study. You know, we do have trouble with getting instructors for certain things. But we've been offered more and more classes countywide and they're filling up. I think we've offered only one class, there was one class we did not make enough people. It was, I think it's a very demanding, physically demanding class. But we filled up our firefighter one class last year. We had 30 people show up personally at the start. We've run three EMT classes. Water rescue has been super successful with the vast students we had there. We've got several special rescue classes between vehicle rescue, rope classes. And they're filling up. Well, we're working with Daniel Rescue Crew, partnering with them on the grant to do our water rescue and do some training in there. So I'm excited about that. I hope in the future, again, if we get a full-time coordinator, eventually we'll run a full type of academy for firing EMS, a county-style academy. So I'm hoping that's going to happen. Directing person, purchasing. We did increase the money last year to the agencies and we're holding them accountable for those funds. You know, we need to continue to fund the large ticket capital items and this is expensive. You know, to fix it and have the right equipment and meet the standard, you know, that's, a fire truck pays $400,000. And if that's just basically, that's nothing fancy at all. So, you know, an hour is $240,000 for an ambulance, just about. So it's just not cheap. And that's it. Any questions?
You got any questions from the board?
Just wanted to comment, thank you for your report. We're on the right page.
I tell you, Mike's been a bit, he doesn't say a lot, but he's been, he's been a key chapter.
Mike, is anything you want to say?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I heard it, opposite of me. I heard that was sick.
He didn't say a word.
Luckily, I, luckily, fiance viewed the video to prove that I really am. She came and told me that.
One question I would ask, I mean, I'm, I don't know, I don't want to, I don't want to intrude. But my question is, that's a lot of, a lot of volunteers that are stepping up, you know, that.
You need more? You want more?
We want more, yes.
Okay, my question then is to you, Mr. Moore. I'm just wanting to be some collaboration. You guys may be already doing something to kind of, you know, excite that in maybe the school system. Maybe you could have maybe a class where the children get to come out and fight some small fires or whatever depending on the age group. I'm just throwing out some ideas.
Well, no, you know, that is absolutely.
Maybe we have the library over there, Ms. Toots, she could lead up, you know.
We can burn some books.
We could burn some books maybe, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Actually, next to Mr. Slim is a few months back that we should really have a volunteer Pennsylvania initiative. Because I agree with him, he uses them, she uses them, and other people do.
I would love to come myself, you know.
We started going, I went last year and I'm going in this year to have an EMT class at the high school or trade school. And I got down and talked to them about volunteering. And I usually take them as little volunteer kids, but I try to stimulate that. You know, I came from one county that I work in, we had also had a fire class in, in the school system. So they could, you know, a kid could go and get their fires and their EMT certifications. And it was run in an academy-style manner. But when they came out, a lot of them volunteered in the county. But if they wanted to get a career job in any of the metro Richmond area, they accepted that as their academy. And then they're coming back from the academy. So I'm hoping in the future we'll be able to have firefighter class as well as EMT class. Because it's, it is a great job. It's a really good job. I mean, I love, you know, but I think we can get some volunteers out there. But I think as a, as a whole, we should have a Pennsylvania county volunteer initiative because so many of us use volunteers.
I agree.
And I think it could work out well for us to do this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Slim, for a job well done.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to item C, Cherston Creek, number one revised plan update, Mr. Richard N. Hicks.
For the record, I'm against both, all right?
We do have a final plan for the Cherston Lake Structure Number One. And they were prepared by the federal GCS. The feds funded the grant and repaid their staff to do the final plan. Now, one of the first questions I've heard, why don't you just take it down instead of fixing it? Let's just take the dam, let's kind of spin it, but. Well, to take it down and put it back like it was, $13,563,000. So that's not really an option. The major conclusion of the study in order to bring the dam into compliance with the federal construction standard and the state dam, state standards, it is necessary to fix the dam by installing a road concrete armored chute spillway over the dam, increasing the stability of the embankment, replacing the riser, the percances, and installing tow drains and replacing the road pole. To be more specific, it says the preferred alternative, based on auxiliary spillway, spillway is to install a road concrete chute over the embankment. The embankment stability issues will be addressed by additional fill material in the embankment, replacement of the riser, and extension of the principal spillway. Pipe goes the upstream and downstream directions of subsequent required. New tow drains will be installed in the embankment. The tailwater issue will be addressed by the placement of the hardened mill road pole downstream of the dam. So that big pipe will end up, the road will have to be replaced. Now, this is a picture of a road, a road compacted concrete auxiliary spillway. So basically, it's built steps all the way down and it goes over the spillway. So basically, it's built steps all the way down and goes over the, this spillway, that keeps it from moving. That, several weeks ago, we went to go see one of them, it was built about six or seven years ago, maybe. I can't even remember the fact, but it was the oldest, least concrete work I've ever done. Same, that's what I tell you right from the beginning. The total cost is $12,968,300. Your local share, which is supposed to be the Pennsylvania County, Chatham, the solo work conservation service, our shares, $4,109,300. And keep in mind, you still have a second lane, the rolling fork lane. So this is just one piece of a two-piece puzzle. The funding schedule is, once you put the plan into escrow funds, they're thinking it's going to take about $1.145,500 to do the actual design of the project. And in year two, you would put, put a payment for structural supervision and budgeting and restoration. And then they would pay for the $7,626,000, which would be a base share of the project. And as far as the sponsors responsibility, we made $7,000 for engineering administration, $3,000 for permitting, and $511,600 to do some of those three properties that all the blood, the flood stage. And it will be a 52-year project. And the lifespan, once you redo it, would be an additional 50 years. Now, what they're asking you to do is to approve this plan. And this would be in, in a supplement to the original work plan that was done in 1965. They say in this plan, in the first or second page of the agreement, this is a non-funding agreement. What they're saying is your blessing, saying this is our accepted plan. And unless you choose to move forward, there are no further funding obligations on your part. And sometime I do, we'll add the second plan, that they should be, which I'm at the same time. Next steps. On the second page of the agreement, they say that there, there are no other funding obligations. Our attorney and the Chatham, Chatham attorney thinks there should be some obligations. And I have, I'm going to go for, in one section, it says, you know, they are, you know, they are, they are, there isn't a future funding obligation, but you look at something else, they say, they say you shall, this part, damn, you shall do this, you shall do that. So there's, you know, there's some changes there. Yeah, that, um, it should be done in the program. So, let's see. Now, as of this week, we moved the approval of the plan to June 28. And what I'm going to ask in the action this evening, and I'm going to bring it back to you in June, we should have the land that suits our little staff. And we also should have load plans to present at the same time. And we've also got $100,000 for Chatham to hopefully give us a second opinion. Does this road compacted concrete, the best option? Maybe something's better, maybe we need to look at some other options. But that, we'll have those funds available to us after July 1st. So we're here, we got, you know, two plans. And we're going to bring the blue final back to you in June. And I think you're going to see your local share is going to be about $9,000,000 for both projects. One option you may have in the future is you say, well, let's just fix what needs to be done for the safety of the dam, which would be significantly less than the plans proposed by them. And if you fix it, then the, the cost of that is all local. But I think our share would be way significantly less than the proposed $9,000,000. And keep in mind, we're doing the federal funds, making, bringing it up to the new standards. The state, you know, basically says you have to fix the safety issues. There's a huge difference between those, two of those standards, you know, you know, that's what's driving that cost out. You know, so in the future, you may have an option, you say, well, let's not do the federal funding, let's do it all locally, just fix what, you know, the safety, making it fix new rain. But we've run, you know, both of those back to you in June. And we, the feds gives the money. You pay them, you know, for the plan. And the last step is you have to approve their plans. And then after that, you decide that the, the feds will pay 100% of the, you know, the plant's specifications for the project. So sometime after June, you might decide, is this something to do our own or we ask for additional federal funds to move forward with the plant's specifications? And so you might have either have to, the plant's specs are completed, you take the beat as you sign up to move forward. Based on the contract documents we sent, it's a far, we don't think it says all that. We're trying to get it better, better by, and we did move it up about 69 things. And until that, we're going to do it in June now and I'll try and answer any questions, you know, like that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
So, any option we choose, except for to do nothing, which I don't think is really an option, long-term, we're going to be spending taxpayers' money from this county for that project. Do we have access to the public to utilize this lake? Is it, is it a nice area up there? This is not my district, but is this a nice, if we're going to use taxpayer's money from all over the county to make this work, do the, does the public have access to this lake to utilize it? Because I've heard that complaint in the past. I don't want taxpayers' money to be utilized for just a few wealthy citizens who happen to live on this lake. I want the public in general to be able to utilize this lake.
On that, Chatham has land that it owns the lake that could be used for public access.
Well, I think before we.
Questions back. Is that public access by county or Chatham or a joint partnership? Maybe they're going to put it on Chatham before.
I'm not interested in Chatham control and I won't be, or supervise us to make sure that if we're going to spend taxpayers' money from all over the county to this venture, to citizens of this county, through the powers of this board, we make sure that they have access to this lake. Not through the town and chat.
I think through their property, I'm sorry.
But we need to get some in place. Before I put some money in, the public would have to have access to it.
Certainly.
And I'm not, I'm not against wealthy people. I'm just saying that everybody, we're going to use public monies of this, the public should have that access to this lake.
I agree with that. I agree with you on that as well.
And we have had preliminary discussions, several of them actually. And we've got our marching orders and we'll bring you back something.
Yeah, I want to make it clear, mate, and I'm not interested in the Chatham, Chatham, Chatham control and access to the lake. I want to make sure that this board, county, has say-so in an area where we can, where the public can use it.
I don't think they want to. I think, you know, they will let us use, you know, their land for the access. I already told Markie they have it on.
It's kind of like what I told my children growing up. He or she who is in charge of the checkbook is in charge.
And we already have those, especially with Chatham, they use their land.
In my case, my wife is controlling it.
Come June, you got to make a decision on the plan. You want to, you know, approve that, your next thing is to continue to send federal funds to the board on that project.
Well, my question is this, is, when, when is it ever ran over?
Never.
Never. And secondly, the, the federal option, to me, doesn't sound too good. It sounds like we're going to have, we're going to have to pay a whole lot. And I'm of the opinion right now, just one little bit I've heard, I'm more for just fixing what we have to fix. You know, that's my opinion. That's the way I feel. I agree with Ellen as well, Blackstock. If we got to spend the money to fix it just to keep what we got it, I still feel access ought to be everybody.
And the state has given money to some banks over the past two years that could possibly cover a significant portion of what, I was, they've already done it several times.
And our delegation's well aware that this is coming down the pipe. And we'll be seeking their support when they go back into session next January.
It's about 100,000 people, so that's sort of my.
And that's to get the ball rolling on a study to see if we just done the, somewhat say, the minimal to bring our, up to safety.
Or is there a better cheaper option?
Yeah.
A non-federal team business. All right, any other discussion?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, appreciate that. Moving to number seven, have, are there any items that we'd like, you would like to discuss from this board? Any items from anybody on the board? I think there are none. We're going to move to number eight.
Yes, if you permit me, I'll read the closed session motion and then we can take a vote on it. All right, we have two closed sessions tonight. The first one involves discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, legal authority, Virginia Code, section 2.2, 3711a3. Subject matter, potential solid waste, convenience center site or sites. Purpose, discussion acquisition of real property for a public purpose. And B, discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating and expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority, Virginia Code, section 2.2, 3711a5. Subject matter, project Impala. Purpose, economic development update. This will require a few of us to go into closed session.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Trump.
Second. Second. Any more discussion? Okay.
I'm kicked off, I vote yes.
Okay. I'm good, in the vote.
I'm ready.
Who's saying, I've got you, it's okay, we'll fix it, yeah.
Okay. unanimous?
That might be more accurate.
The board is now closed and we're going into closed session and.
We're now back in open session at 6:27 PM. I will now certify closed session, being resolved at the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, excuse me, on March 12th, 2019. The board hereby certifies my reported vote, that to the best of each board member's knowledge, on the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and did find the motion authorized a closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered a closed meeting. If any board member believes there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state. Prior to the vote indicating the substance of departure, the statement shall be recorded in the board's minutes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barber's absent. Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren is absent. Now you need to adjourn the meeting.
I adjourn this meeting.